It is five thirty-two and I call the meeting of April the sixteenth to order. Mark will call.
Mr. Gerard.
President.
Mr. Fractor. Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Proper. Mr. Guerra is.
Online. I'm making him a panelist right now because he can't speak yet, I don't think.
Come back to him and Ms. Gord.
Here.
Hello, I'm here.
Hi Ethan. Thanks Ethan.
We don't see you, but we heard you.
Huh. Too bad because I'm, you can see a nice view behind me.
Plank Commissars, are there any changes to the minutes? Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open it up to public comment. If there's anybody attending online, is there?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll move on. Do you have anything today in the consent calendar?
No.
Doesn't look like we do. So with that, it looks like the State of the Open Space Report is next on the agenda.
The left, so if you lose the mouse, just keep going right.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. I'm Anne Low, Open Space and Trails Manager for the town of Breckenridge. Happy to share with you our State of the Open Space Report from 2023. This is a good synopsis of everything. Oh, we're going to share the screen here so everyone can see. A good synopsis of all of our open space program highlights from 2023. And just to kick things off, we I'm going to try and find the mouse or do a page, a scroll down. Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right, bear with me. We are trying to organize a lot of our information to follow our adopted master plan, which we shared with you last year was adopted in 2023. And we're always trying to make our master plan very front and center because we're now in the implementation of it. So we're trying to organize a lot of our reporting based on our strategic goals of that master plan, which I'll get into in just a second. But our mission of the Open Space Program hasn't changed since we were started back in 1997. Thanks to a voter initiative in 1996, which started our sales tax measure. And we are very much into what we consider the stewardship phase of our organization, our program. We spent the first, you know, fifteen or twenty years or so acquiring as much land as we could, building as much of our trail infrastructure as we could, and now we have this great responsibility of managing everything that we've purchased, everything that we've constructed. So we like to say we're in our stewardship phase of growth here. And our master plan helped us really identify what's most important to us. And so at the core of a lot of what we do is conservation that remains a strategic goal of ours. We definitely want to continue conserving important properties for those resource values. Recreation is so very important to this community, so we wanted to make sure that was a strategic goal. We want to make sure we're really maintaining all of that huge trail network that we've constructed over the years. And new for us is the the whole world of access and inclusion. And we're very much trying to consider how can we be more inclusive in our outdoor spaces? How can we ensure equitable access to the outdoors? And we're learning a lot. That's, you know, certainly kind of a new world for us, but there are a lot of folks around the state that we can lean on for some good examples of that. And then finally stewardship, because stewardship is so very important. We're really taking a look at how we're managing all of our resources from forest health and river restorations to even just stewarding our trails and trying to balance that use of a lot of visitor use management. So those are our overarching goals. A quick, just at a glance, what we accomplished over the past year. I think it's amazing that since 1997, we've actually spent over $28 million in in open space acquisitions. We actually just closed about two hours ago on another property, which is really exciting on Little Mountain for three and a half million. So we continue to really invest a lot of these sales tax dollars into some amazing properties around the area. We have tipped over 5,000 acres of conserved land. A lot of this is in partnership with our friends and partners at Summit County. We have sixty-eight miles of single track trails in our network. Our 2023 budget before a council appropriation was just shy of $3 million. We've been trying to do a little better job of tracking all of our technician time outside. Council has had a big directive for staff to really make sure we maintain those trails. And so we're, we're actually tracking a lot of those hours now. So about ninety-three percent of our seasonal staff time is actually spent on trail maintenance. And of course, we're hyper focused on invasive species and noxious weeds and managed to pull about 400 pounds during some volunteer events, which was huge for us last year. I'm sure with this storm cycle, we have even this morning, we're going to have more down trees to take care of, but that's a big part of what we do with all the winds that we have here is remove a lot of these hazardous trees from our trail corridors. And then we love to involve the community. So we have a lot of volunteer events. We typically do somewhere around seven, eight events throughout the summer season to really just get people out to see firsthand what open space does. And in the last couple of years, we've really kind of made a shift from doing just trail construction to doing a lot of other types of land management activities, a lot of weed pools. And so we had about 117 volunteers come out and help us last year. And then we also have an environmental education program. And we took about 566 people out on guided hikes to help them learn a little bit more about what we have here in the area. So just breaking down our budget, you know, we have a new relatively new finance team at the town. And they've really helped us kind of refine, break this budget down. So hopefully for the layperson, it's a lot easier to understand what we do for charges for services. I think that was 29% of our budget and why that's so high is we run and we pay for the water treatment plant over in French Gulch. And that was part of a consent decree when we purchased the B and B property. So we do have a lot of expenses related to running that plant. And then the county reimburses us for half that. Land acquisitions, this was before we purchased the Dry Gulch property last year, which was another three and a half million dollars. But you can see it a snapshot just how we're spending all of our open space dollars. And this is a special revenue fund with the town, so it's not used for any other purpose than open space. And by all means, interrupt me as I go if you have questions or want me to slow down or chat about anything. Just on the conservation side of the work that we do, acquisitions is always near and dear to us. You can see kind of the running total of our acquisitions. Last year, we had forty-one acres of land that was primarily the Dry Gulch property, which is a really exciting addition to our program. And a lot of the work that we do is really done jointly with the county. And interestingly, back when our open space program was started, we made the decision then to work in the entire Upper Blue River watershed, understanding that so much of what happens out in the watershed affects us here in Breckenridge. So whether that's water quality, scenic views, wildlife habitat. So our program tends to be very expansive throughout the watershed. We have kind of fewer and fewer opportunities, I think, in the core of Breckenridge itself, but a lot of what we have preserved is in their surrounding areas, but definitely what we, what we see every day. And just a quick snapshot of the map, everything in blue is what we've done jointly with Summit County Open Space. Great way to leverage our dollars and stretch them even further. And what is in purple are just town only properties. So the county has sent, has spent a significant amount of money jointly with us throughout the years. They remain really our closest partner and we love working with them. On the recreation side of things, we have been so focused on trail maintenance, really at the direction of council. And it was interesting, last year was the first year since 2007, we had no new trail miles. And that was really because we wanted to just take a really good inventory and assessment of all of the trails that we've constructed. Make sure that we really understand what needs are are most important on some of those properties and taking care of them. So about ninety-three percent of our seasonal crew and we have seven seasonal staff that come in in the summer and they work closely with Joel Dukes. Ninety-three percent of their time was just on trail maintenance. So that's a lot of drainage work, a lot of erosion control, eliminating social trails, taking down a lot of those hazardous trees. And then working with our volunteers was about five and a half percent of their time. Our crew ends up being kind of the crew leaders and dividing up with volunteers on those workdays, which is great for them to be able to interact with folks in the community. And then we also collect a lot of data, right? Because it's important to understand who's out on our trails, how many people are out there. Sometimes what animals are out there as well. So we do have a number of trail counters. And new this past year, we also set up some more wildlife cameras so that we could just see kind of what wildlife are moving through some of these areas. And so actual kind of trail construction, less than a percent there. Because very little of that happening last year, but we've got some new stuff in the works this year. And we have been really taking a look at trailhead planning, knowing that we have so many more and more people that are utilizing our open spaces and we have some pretty limited trailheads for actual parking. We hope that people ditch their cars and actually find a way to walk or hike or bike to a trailhead. But we have been trying to take care of some of these trailheads that have had outstanding issues. In off of Tiger Road in the Swan River Valley, we constructed the Brown Gulch Trailhead with the county. That was just a really important way to get people to that newly restored Swan River area, which has great fishing, great trails, great Nordic skiing in the winter months and a much needed trailhead in that area. And then we've been, as I mentioned, focused on a lot of inclusivity and accessibility. So we constructed a dedicated ADA trailhead at the Riley Dredge on the south side of French Gulch Road to accommodate two spaces. We're working on some signage this year. It was just completed at the, in the fall months. But we're excited to have that dedicated trailhead. And then we're working on the Lorium Trailhead. If any of you have ever been up there in the winter months, it's a scary place to be. It's off of County Road. Oh gosh, is it 538? Past Baldy Mountain Town Homes up the very, very steep road before you get to the Boreas Pass Gate. It's an amazing place for winter skiing and that's, it gets a lot of use in the winter months. But the road grade, I forgot what percentage it is. Fifteen, twenty, thirty percent? I don't know what it is. It's crazy. And we have a lot of accidents from cars sliding into each other. So we're really taking a look at what we can do to improve the safety and parking at that trailhead. Working closely with the county and County Road and Bridge, who, who have to plow that area and they deal with a lot of the cars that end up sliding off. For access and inclusion, we are really trying to look at our trail design and see where we can make some improvements. Trying to take a look to see if there are new opportunities for trails that we can make wheelchair friendly or seeing if we can retrofit some existing trails. And what we've learned, if, if you're to make a truly ADA trail, we're, we're limited. I think the maximum grades are usually like point five percent. But given our crazy terrain that we have here, we can make trails for wheelchairs and a lot of mobility type devices. It gives us a little bit more flexibility and more room to work for some of those types of projects. So we retrofit the Riley Dredge Trail last year to be wheelchair accessible. And it's really exciting because, you know, the French Gulch area has such amazing views. We have such amazing history there with the dredge and the whole dredge rock and context around there that we really wanted to just provide more opportunities to folks that have a hard time getting around, whether that's folks recovering from surgery and ski injuries or folks that have other other types of mobility issues. This summer, we're going to complete some bump outs on the bridge, which is really narrow right now. And if you meet someone, it's tricky. So we're going to have some little pull offs along that bridge to come. But we really wanted to take this trail and have a dedicated trailhead just to be a little more accessible. And our partners at BOEC, even at Breckenridge History are really excited about these particular changes. And then we're also working with the BOEC up at the Salma Reservoir and the Griffith Lodge. And we are constructing this summer a whole wheelchair friendly trail that runs kind of behind the lodge. There's a nice little forest there and our staff have been working to design a trail with them. So that just extends a little bit more, more mileage, more trail length for folks with mobility challenges. And then we're going to improve that trailhead there, which is not very welcoming. It needs to be graded a little bit better for wheelchairs and then we're going to be working on kiosk and signage. One of the things that we're learning with inclusive design is that we want to provide information at trailheads to really empower people and to give them as much information as possible, really about what the trail entails. What are the grades? Are there rest points? Like what should someone expect? And so we just want people to have as much information as possible to make good decisions about going out on these trails. So that is what we were working on last year. We have two summer seasonal naturalists who do a lot of environmental education. A huge part of their focus is cucumber gulch preserve. They help redirect people during the spring closure when animals are calving, faunning, nesting in there. And they've also set up a lot of interpretive stations at busy places like the Troll. They can catch easily a hundred people in an hour out there and be able to to share a lot of environmental education and they love, my naturalists love to switch up their topics. So if you can learn anything from geology to wildlife to water quality out there. For the guided hikes that they've led, they had three hundred and four in cucumber last year. They took 117 people to Iowa Hill, which was kind of a nice alternative for folks with a lot of history. And then 145 people through the Illinois Creek area. And we recently completed a trail on Little Mountain. And so that kind of offers another great opportunity to lead folks and, and share some information about the area. I think it's kind of interesting what we're learning about folks who come out on these hikes is that forty-five percent were actually Summit County residents. This is great. We're reaching our locals and we're switching up the topics. We have a lot of repeat people that come back for these hikes. About thirty-two percent of them were from elsewhere in Colorado. Twenty-three percent were out of state visitors and all of these hikes are free to the public. We're going to make it easier this year to sign up for these hikes. It's been a little cumbersome in the past, but we're just trying to streamline that. And we have a whole variety of topics. Our same two naturalists from last year are coming back this year. So we love retention because they are going to hit the ground running. They'll, they'll continue to set up interpretive stations. They'll set up a table with all kinds of touch and feel things for kids and adults. They share a lot of great information. And they're able to impart a lot of leave no trace principles, which is really important to us. Something that we're really striving to improve on a little bit more. And then in their downtime, they rove the trails, chat with people, see if they need anything, if they know where they're going. And just provide that kind of friendly customer service interface out on the trails. And then our friends at Breckenridge, this is our volunteer program. We hosted eight different events last year with 117 volunteers. And the federal government always has these nice metrics that we can use for the number of volunteers and the hours that they put in, what that equates to in today's dollars. So basically those 117 volunteers donated about $18,000 in labor to us, which is huge. And it's a great opportunity for people to learn more about us, what we do, and hopefully engage them in the work that we're doing. And we had two workdays devoted to what we call the Front Country Trail Maintenance. So when we did our master plan, we identified different management zones. It just helps us get our arms around this big service area of ours. And so the front country are all those near town areas, near town trails, because they just see more people. So we really want to make sure that we're putting a little bit more emphasis on maintenance in those areas that are seeing the most people. And we treated about 10 acres of our open spaces for removal of invasive weeds. It's an ongoing battle, but we continue. And then, you know, we're, we're starting to see in some areas people wandering off trail and doing some resource damage. We're seeing this over near the Troll at Illinois Creek. And we're seeing this also along the whole River Trail by Block 11. And so we've been constructing a lot of buck and rail fencing to close off social trails. Oftentimes planting seed, planting trees, just trying to really keep people on trail, which has been really successful for us, but it's a lot of labor for our crew to do. So they put together about 5,000 feet of buck and rail fencing last year. And we'll probably do the same this year. It seems to be a never ending challenge for us. And on the stewardship side of things, cucumber gulch preserve, this has always been our crown jewel of the open space program. It's really one of the reasons if you chat with Jeffrey Bergeron and Ellen Holland's head, why our open space program was started in the first place. And if you haven't been there, I encourage you to come on out, come join staff out there. It's an amazing place. It's 139 acres total, fifty-seven acres of wetlands, most of which are rare fens that we don't see hardly anywhere around the state and eighty-two acres of uplands. And we've been doing research and monitoring here for twenty some years. And so within it, we monitor our beaver populations. We had a beaver disease five, six years ago that really took a hard hit on our beaver population and our numbers are starting to come back again, which is exciting. When we have beavers in cucumber gulch preserve, they take care of things. They're the best engineers, of course. And when they're not there, we end up having to go and do a lot of work, a lot of repair, a lot of dam work and just, you know, a lot of, a lot of interference. But when the beavers are strong there, they take care of things. It's kind of amazing. But we do a lot of groundwater and wetland analysis, especially with the ski resort being next door and uphill and that we know there's still some sediment and drainage coming off of there. So we continue to monitor that. We've had about 20 years of monitoring of our birds, our birds out there basically. And it's been an interesting evolution to watch what birds, what species are coming back, what we're seeing. There's kind of an overall decline in avian species in cucumber, which is reflective of what we see in a lot of areas around the state, around the west. We continue to monitor for boreal toads. These are our state endangered toad. And we haven't seen one since 2019. We, we strongly suspect there's a fungus that attacks boreal toads and we kind of suspect it's been introduced to the system, but we need a toad to be able to even test for that. So we haven't seen one since 2019, but we're pretty diligent in getting out there and monitoring just on the hopes that we will, we'll find some. And then we have a lot of wildlife and trail camera monitoring that we do in there. So we can track our species. We can see what kind of animals we're getting. We did have a mountain lion this past year, which doesn't happen very often, but there are certainly more moving into the area. But just an amazing array of moose and deer. And when we see twins with our moose and deer, usually that's a sign of really high quality habitat. So we like to see twins on those cameras. And for the land management activities that we're engaged in, we, we do a lot of forest health projects. We were working on the Peabody Placer over near the Highlands and Gold Run Gulch Road last year in partnership with the county, also with the Forest Service. We have a lot of cut piles. We thought we might burn this winter, but maybe it'll be next fall on Airport Road and near Shock Hill. We continue to do a lot of weed control. We certainly have volunteer efforts, but we also pay the Summit County Weed Program and we hire a contractor also just to really tackle a lot of these invasive species, which are getting pretty difficult in areas. And then we monitor and manage a lot of our areas. We're really taking a close look at a lot of our high use areas like Illinois Creek, the River Trail and also over near Sal Mill Reservoir to figure out just what types of management activities we can do to better, better restore some of the areas that have gotten degraded from all the use. And then from a river restoration perspective, we're still engaged in the Swan River Restoration. That's been such an amazing success with our partners at the county and others. And we are basically just waiting for all of this vegetation to take effect on the McCain property. But that river restoration is absolutely amazing. I'm excited to see how that system comes together, but we just need all that vegetation to take hold before that is open to the public. And then finally, we are great partners, of course, with Breckenridge History. There are a lot of amazing historic resources out on our open spaces. Last year, the big focus of that was the Jesse Mill and getting a roof on that, much like the Wellington Oro Mine, just to stabilize the structure. And this one, there's still a little cleanup to be done early in the summer months, but largely a success and we hope that that will keep that amazing structure standing for some time. And then the other thing that we are really starting to get more engaged with and working across the county with our partners is visitor use management. We have so many people visiting our open spaces and trails that we just really want to make sure that we are kind of managing where they're going, what they're doing, what, what information we provide for them, what amenities we offer. So we're really taking a look at what we can, what we can do to better serve our visitors and manage that use on open space. So we do keep track of a lot of counts and we've been doing this for a number of years. It's hard to read at this scale, I apologize. But starting from around 2013, we started keeping a trail counter, summer and winter at the B and B Trailhead and at Sally Barber. And last year, what we saw is we were getting about 274 people a day during the summer months at B and B, 255 in the winter. So they're almost pretty even, summer and winter use at B and B. It remains a very popular area and it's also that portal really into our 1,800 acres that we bought with a B and B property. Sally Barber further up French Gulch Road sees a little bit less. It sees 121 people in the summer a day and about 112 in the winter months. So almost neck and neck on those numbers as well. And then we have some seasonal numbers only from cucumber gulch. These were kind of astounding numbers for us and we've been tracking the different entrances into cucumber since 2009. And you can see, we had a data error in 2017. That's the one weird dip that we have in our data. But we're up to about 588 on average per day in cucumber gulch preserve when it opens in July through the end of September. So we've seen just a dramatic rise there, perhaps more so than any of our other, other trailheads or other areas. And then we also have a winter counter up at the Gold Run Peabody Trailhead. And that one, we've had a lot of issues with the counter itself. But we averaged about 164 in the winter per day in the winter months over there. And then we can't forget about Isaac Hartstone. We do keep a counter up at the Troll and that continues to be a wildly popular you know, installation of art on our open space. And certainly not as high in numbers as we originally saw when it was first installed, but you know, we get about 895 people a day in the summer and 632 in the winter. So it continues to be really popular. This is a trail that we're actually going to try and retrofit this year to be more wheelchair friendly. That's a request we've gotten since we installed the trail initially. And so we're going to dig out a lot of the flagstone. We'll reuse that and put in kind of a crusher fine that meets the right grade and put a handrail and put the planks a little bit closer on the boardwalk section of that trail, just to be a lot more user friendly. And, and that is all. That is our team. We have an amazing team of open space folks, our summer seasonals, our two golden retrievers who spend time in our office every day. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll start. That was amazing. I've spent a lot of time around parks and I was really impressed by that.
Oh, thank you.
On the accessibility, do you, are you using ODAG, which is outdoor trails? It's, it's done by the Forest Service. So it's, it's, the ADA is more architectural. So the trail OD AAG is more, I don't know, easier to implement.
Okay.
May not be entirely wheelchair accessible, but it does allow others with mobility issues to hike.
Oh, I am unfamiliar.
I've seen trails where maybe the, the first portion of a trail is ADA ABAS. And after that, as the terrain gets more challenging, it, it goes to the slower standard.
Oh, fantastic.
Who you mentioned.
No, I'm, I'm going to look into that. As I said, we're still very much trying to learn and get as much as we can. We, we have great partners and the Forest Service and the county and we're all trying to figure this out together, but that sounds like a great resource. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I have a few questions. First of all, I'm a hiker. I know a lot of people are mountain bikers, but there are conflicts between hikers and mountain bikers on the trails. First of all, I was wondering if you were considering any more areas for hiking only? I know that, you know, like part of Barney Ford is now hiking.
Right.
Then we appreciate that. But it does get a little hairy further up.
Yeah, I, I would say that we're always looking at opportunities that we can construct more user specific trails. And I think what we've been hearing from the community is that need for more hiking friendly trails. We're trying to balance that out with, there are a lot of folks in our community that want multi-use trails. But we're also trying to see, well, can we design them better, better sightlines? So that, you know, we at least can, can manage those conflicts a little bit better. But I think we're open to all types of, of possibilities. And what we included in our master plan was trying to identify where we might have more hiking trails, where we might have more uphill routes to separate some of that use. Cause it is, it is a concern at times.
Yeah, well, let me suggest in Boulder County, there are some areas where mountain bikes are prohibited on certain days of the week.
Yes, yep.
And I don't know if that's something that you would want to consider, but it would be appreciated.
Yeah, we have a lot to learn from our, our front range neighbors for sure, because they've been dealing with so many of these issues before us, the, the big waves of people and how to manage conflict, how to manage use. Different open space folks in the front range will do different days of the week. Sometimes they change even, you know, the direction of the trail. You might go clockwise certain days of the weeks, counterclockwise the other days. I, I think we have a lot that we can, we can learn from that and ultimately see what, what is best for the community.
Yeah, okay. Second question. Is anything in the works for cucumber gulch as far as maybe limiting some of the Nordic trails going through there or?
You know, it's, it's interesting and that is a hot button topic these days. We are having a community meeting on Monday. Thank you to Steve for agreeing to facilitate that for us at 5:30 to 7:30. Because there's a, a lot of talk about cucumber gulch and we're seeing a lot of numbers through there. And one thing I, I will say is that the, the Nordic use there has been going on long before our open space program. And so in all of our guiding docs, all of our management plans, that Nordic use has been grandfathered. But even just during the summer months, we're seeing a lot of use. And staff, at least I'm worried about a lot of the natural resources there. So we had proposed a couple of years ago rerouting the trail so that it wouldn't cut through the preserve and through prime habitat, but just follow the perimeter. But that is, is upsetting to a lot of the neighbors for sure. So we're gonna have a community meeting. We're gonna be bringing in CPW to chat a little bit about their expertise, just in, in how they manage lands, especially lands with a state endangered species. And we're bringing in our ecometrics consultants who have been doing so much of their research and monitoring there for so many years, just to really gather a lot of information. Because I, I think there's just a lot of information that people would love to know about this area. It's special and people want to use it for different things.
Meeting gonna be?
It's gonna be right here in Town Hall, but we're gonna be in that little, um, lower level conference room next door.
Going back to the hiking trails, another thing to consider as far as mixed use is concerned is bigger signs. I know the council does not like big signs, but people don't see them.
It's, it's a really good point. And we, as part of our implementation of the master plan, are, we just put out an RFP for a signage work plan to exactly look at our signage all across the network. And we received nine proposals then, which was kind of amazing. So we need to sort through those. But that's one of the concerns is we want to make sure our wayfinding signage is adequate so that people can really understand where they are. We really want to look at all the best practices of what, what is the right size? Like what's the right placement, the distance? We want to make sure we have places to have the right regulatory language, etiquette language. And so we're really looking at this holistically and hope that some consultants can really help us, you know, learn what the best way to do this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with you totally.
And then the last thing, and I've mentioned this before. I, I know you have volunteers, but they're doing mostly trail maintenance. And then your naturalists are doing a little bit of trailhead stuff. But, you know, just like the Forest Service has FDRD. You know, I'm sure that people would be happy to be volunteer rangers. You know, you wouldn't have to pay them. But I think it would be helpful to have people who were on the trail with some kind of insignia.
It would.
I'm answering questions on the trails all the time.
I, I love that. And I, I think there's something to be said for just having that presence out there. And, you know, our staff are limited and we can. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. No, that's a great idea and something we can certainly look into. I think my, my naturalists would love to have some extra support out there.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, it could be winter, summer.
Definitely.
Just have to be one season.
Right, yeah, I like that. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Ethan, do you have any comments or questions?
I, I don't really. I thank you for this presentation and, and, and the great job you guys do. I'm an avid user of, of, of all the open space and, and trails. And your signage and all that stuff has been great. But other than that, other than alkalis, I don't really have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan. Thanks, Ann. This is great. I, I would encourage you to try and get this out, get Summit Daily to say that this presentation's available. I, I, I don't think a lot of people appreciate what you guys do.
Oh, thank you.
Blow your horn a little bit.
Okay.
So people know that, how active this is. A couple of things. One is a Little Mountain. So did, is the town buying the whole property that the family was trying to develop?
We will now own, actually as of now, we now own like all of Little Mountain.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
I wish you'd done it two years ago, because I have many late night meetings in Upper Blue Planting.
I bet you did. I bet you did. But it's a good outcome, but it took a little while to get there.
You know, made a lot of money too. I had to listen to a lot of discussions about that. Another thing in terms of the sign is similar to what Susan was saying, is maybe some education on how to share trails in the winter. I was up in Wyoming near Jackson and Grand Teton. And on the trails there, they literally have a sign. And, and the Summit County, the cross-country ski Summit County Trail, the Facebook page shows examples of this.
Yeah.
And, you know, a couple of times like I've blazed a trail up Sally Barber and then I come down and people are tromping right through.
I know.
It happens on Boreas Pass Road.
It does, yep.
You know, some kind of education that just said, you know, snowshoers and hikers to the side, skiers here, bikers there.
You sign at Sally Barber that said that? And I don't know if it's there anymore.
I, I am not sure if it is either off the top of my head, but absolutely, education is, is key. And the more people that we have, we have a lot of folks that are not used to doing a lot of winter recreation and, you know, don't know the best time to go out and fat bike or the, you know, how to stay out of tracks and things like that. But we, we do, we do our best, but I think there's a lot more room for education.
And then another thing on signage is, I know at the Sally Barber Trailhead and Boreas Pass Road Trailheads in the winter, in the winter, you, you're not supposed to parallel park across from the point in, but there's no signage saying that. And I was at Boreas Pass and had come out and one of the county sheriffs was there ticketing all the cars. And I said, I didn't know, I, I said, you can't park there? He said, no, it's a, it's a county law that you can't park on county roads or it's a state law, you can't park. And I said, well, you know, our, our visitors don't know that. How about, would be nice if there was some signage here? And he said, well, the people who plow the road don't want signs on that side of the road because they can't push the snow off the side. And I said, well, there's got to be a solution. It's not very welcoming.
It, it's not, no. And we're working on a coordinated effort right now with the Forest Service and all the municipalities in Summit County. We've been working with the Volpe Center and they're part of the US Department of Transportation. And they're helping with a lot of visitor use issues at big areas. They've helped with Maroon Bells, Hanging Lake. They're helping us look at all of our trailheads in Summit County and figure out what would make the most sense. In some cases, it might be realignment, definition of parking, signs about where you can park exactly. And so we're going through this huge effort right now in an inventory to, to do hopefully exactly that. It'll just take us, I think, a little bit of time to implement it, but it's totally on our mind. Yeah.
Volpe Space, the Volpe Transportation Center, I'll tell you an interesting story about that later. That was supposed to be the Space Center.
Oh, really?
Kennedy got shot and Johnson moved it to Houston.
Oh, my gosh.
Where? It's in Cambridge, on the MIT campus.
Yeah, they're phenomenal folks. We love working with them.
But they reused, that was supposed to be the Space Center.
Okay, okay. And they're, they're gonna help also with the planning efforts for the new National Monument, because that's the other piece I didn't mention. But certainly the town is involved in a lot of the access points into the Camp Hill and Ten Mile National Monument. So we're kind of planning for a lot of visitor use and trailhead planning and signage and everything else around that as well.
Thanks, I'm good.
More to come.
Hey, thanks for all you do and.
Thank you.
Like everyone here, we live here because of the great outdoors, right? So I just had a few things and none of them were real major, but you talked about accidents and things like that. Do you track that? Do you have a database where you track like where the accidents are?
I do not, or the, the town does not keep a database. Most of that is in the county. I think Roden Bridge has their methods of keeping track of a lot of that. I haven't seen any reports from them, but they're the ones who seem to have to deal with most of that, since most of it is, is county road.
Okay, but you don't track like if someone, if you have a couple of accidents on the same mountain bike trail or something like that?
No, we, we don't. And it's, it's, it's tough because a lot of people don't tell us.
Right.
Either, you know, we run into that even just on the rec path. Every once in a while, the police will get a heads up that there's been, you know, collision of bikes going into each other or something like that, e-bikes maybe. But, but we don't always hear about that kind of thing. I think one of the things that we are trying to do is develop a new website. And we're hoping that there, out of that, we can have a little reporting mechanism. Certainly as Susan and I were chatting down trees, like can we make it easy for people to go in and report things that they see, that they observe that happen out on our open spaces? So I'm hoping we can do something like that and we might then be able to gather some of that information.
Okay. And then you mentioned e-bikes. So has there been any thought about e-mountain bikes, having specific trails? Like nice, easy ones for accessibility for people who maybe aren't so fit or things like that?
I, I will say that at, at least our previous town council was against that idea. Just wanted e-bikes on the paved rec path or on streets and roads or on the, the moto networks as it is with the National Forest. But so far the town and the county have just been sort of paying attention to what other communities are doing, but haven't made that move. I think we'd really need a lot of council support and the Board of County Commissioner's support to, to make that move. It's, it's happening in a lot of communities and the batteries are getting so integrated into frames. It's oftentimes hard to tell unless someone is, you know, not pedaling going uphill. Sometimes that's the only way we can tell. But I, I think it's an evolving thing and we're, we're gonna, I, I think personally we'll be there someday because it's also really hard to enforce. But right now we're just sort of watching and waiting.
Hey, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Yes, echoing the comments from everyone else about how important our land management and trail system is, not only for the people who live here, but for the visitors as well. What plan is there for the use of the Dry Gulch town and area?
We are hoping to develop a management plan. The, the first step when we acquired that property, it's, it's been on a priority list for a lot of years because it's an inholding surrounded by so much open space and national forest land. And thankfully, we were able to work with the owner on, on purchasing that. And the interesting challenge with that property is there are a lot of structures on the property. We're not always used to structures on open space. Some of those structures are historic to the property, but a previous owner brought in a lot of that from other areas. And so we engaged Breck History to help us understand, well, is there anything you all would like to, to keep? Like to do with these buildings? And it, it took them a little while to do an inventory. I think they first brought in Eric Twitty, who's a great expert around the state. And I think his thought was that most of these aren't historic right to that property, so they don't have the immediate value of all the context. And so he didn't, he wasn't very interested. And so I think Breckenridge History then brought in Pat Guyberson, I think it was, to do an inventory. And really great job of just understanding what each structure is, what it was associated with on the property. And I think Breck History, their plan would be to interpret a little bit of both time periods, a little bit of the old and the newer, a little of what was there originally and then what was kind of added on and, and do more passive interpretation. There's thoughts that maybe they could tie this into an interpretive loop throughout the Golden Horseshoe. We have such great history in French Gulch and a lot of interpretive signs. Could make that part of the same, you know, sort of a, a trail of these historic sites. They, I think, leave open the possibility of maybe doing some tours on the property. It's a little bit of a challenge to get back there, especially if you were to try and go on foot for a lot of the folks that come out on their tours. So I think we're trying to figure that out. And we'd love to develop a management plan once we kind of have that piece figured out from Breckenridge History. And one of the things that we just know in the near term, we're gonna have to deal with, the county, I, I think forgot when we first purchased the property a year ago, that there are two septic systems on the property that were put in in the eighties. And so we're gonna need to deal with those this summer and likely, you know, do all the permits to abandon basically and remove those. So I think we've got some immediate needs to take care of some of that infrastructure first. But we're open to ideas and would love the community to weigh in on that property.
I've never seen a particular map of exactly what was acquired up there.
Okay.
How much of that hilltop that was acquired?
Oh, it's, it's a good portion of the hilltop. You can see that Quonset hut that gleams in the sunlight from quite some distance away. That's kind of near the, the top of the property.
When you come in on the, the road path, there's a, there's a fork, one side goes into the town and one goes up over the hill. Is that gonna be part of what's owned or is, is that retained by?
It, it is part of what goes up the hill. And there's an old trail that runs, if, if, Mark, can you correct me if I'm wrong up there? But kind of up past the Quonset hut, there is an old trail. It hasn't gotten a lot of use in our network, because it's been kind of wonky connections. And so I think we have an opportunity to better align that. Right now, we were kind of forced with the easement alignments we had under the previous owner. But now we can, I think, design better trails through there. So it might see some use up to that point, I think, and connect to the network.
Cause I think that would connect to the ZL trail if you go over the hill.
There, there was, I think, a proposal. We, we were considering kind of a, a straight shot, not on the hillside, but down kind of side slope all the way over to ZL. But the one thing that we discovered, we put up a wildlife camera there. There are a ton of elk that visit the property. And it, we just want to monitor. It doesn't feel right putting a trail in through the middle of elk habitat when they have such little habitat left. So we just want to continue monitoring for a little bit to see if that is kind of a regular area that they use. And I think our Open Space Advisory Commission, our BOSAC, was not very wild about a trail through there. So that's been kind of backburnered for now.
And not to be stuck on this area, but if you go up there on the, the steep hill from Gold Run, there's a wonderful little cabin back there. Who owns that, you know?
I know.
So you're going up the Gold Run Road from the Gold Run Parking Lot. And you can turn left and go up to the ZL trail, where you can go through a gate and go up to Dry Gulch. Straight uphill, it's a really steep hill. But there's a wonderful cabin right there, about 100 yards up that trail.
I'm trying to think, I'm not. I feel like we have so many little cabins everywhere. I know, yeah.
Acquire if open space doesn't own that.
Yeah, I am not sure. I know there are still a few privately held claims up in there by someone we all know in the community, but. But vast majority of it is national forest or jointly owned open space.
And that brings me to my next question in leaving Dry Gulch. How do the acquisitions tend to come to open space?
It's, it's interesting. Some of them are, we have an amazing network of some realtors that work with us. I mean, Turk Monapar is amazing and such a dear friend. And he gives us a heads up on a lot of things and he makes a lot of those connections for us. The county also cold, cold letters, cold calls a lot of people, especially all the backcountry mining claims. They regularly send out letters every single year to property owners just saying, hey, if you're interested in selling, you know, we're interested potentially in purchasing, which yields quite a bit over time. We're finding a lot of the backcountry mining claims that are left are family ownerships with a lot of family members. And sometimes that's really difficult to navigate or even just to bring all those people together. But the county spearheads a lot of that for us. We certainly do have some priority properties on our, on our list that we keep internal of ones. The Little Mountain Property has been on our list for a very long time because that's important. Dry Gulch was on our list for a very, very long time. So oftentimes these take a while or take an event in a family for them to be ready to sell. But we, we try to look at every angle.
And finally, like Susan, I'm primarily a hiker. And when you get out there in the public doing a campaign like I just did, a lot of people talk to me about the trail use.
Yes.
And the issue of bikers versus hikers. Not that they were antagonistic about it, but we're making requests more safety oriented for how to live together on those trails. And one of the issues that I heard over and over and over again is closing Aspen Alley during peak leaf season time to bikers. And, you know, we, we really enjoy this, but we're afraid to go there.
Yeah, oh, I, I get it. I'm, I'm a hiker too, so I have, I have the same fear, especially at Aspen Alley in the fall of the year. But that one has been on our radar for years and we would love in that area to have an uphill route and a downhill route to be able to separate the use, which I think would be really the best solution rather than closing, closing trails down to people.
Like you did on 44.
And, and what we anticipate with this one is that's all national forest. And so that would require the NEPA process to go through. But we are trying to collect and go through a list of all those potential wish list trails and the best connections that might cross national forest. And we're trying to compile all of that with the hopes that we'll do another NEPA analysis down the road. Forest Service is extremely strapped for staff and resources. And so we just completed a NEPA a couple of years ago now in the Golden Horseshoe and we just want to get that together. We'll probably have to pay for it, which is, is fine, but we want to just make sure we get a good collection of trails before we start that NEPA process. Cause it's just long and involved and we'd rather have kind of a good, a good collection of trails to consider at one time. But that's definitely one of them.
Yeah, it's so close to town and it's got the great sawmill history at the base and a lot of people go there. Not locals as.
Absolutely.
Only visitors as well.
Yeah.
So thanks for all you do. I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Anne, amazing presentation. The graphics of the presentation kind of tell the whole story. Your dialogue to go with it is wonderful. I'd like to commend you on your leadership of this group. I looked at the budget and, and all of those categories, expense categories seemed to me to be very reasonable.
Oh, thank you.
We can be proud of that too, because that's part of the management test. So I have nothing but good things to say, but I must remind all of us of the unintended consequences of restricting development. You know, we've got the future generation that really can't afford to be here to enjoy it. So we need to be mindful of all the good things we do and, and not be too restrictive to where we might have some affordable housing in the future.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks Planning Commission. I just wanted to follow up a couple of things. So Open Space and Trails is a division of Community Development. So we, you know, Community Development, we have planning, building, housing and Open Space and Trails. When I came over as Assistant Director in 2005, that's where the program started was in, in ComDev. And in about 2016 or 17, it moved over to Recreation Department. And when Scott Reed accepted the position as Assistant Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager last year, got an opportunity to bring it back over to Community Development. And so I'm really happy about that. And Anne works with a great group of people like you guys, the BOSAC, that makes recommendations, many of the things that you guys talked about or asked questions about tonight. BOSAC has spent a whole meeting talking about, you know, one-way trail, stuff like that. Do we want to be like Boulder? No, we don't, you know, and really lively debates. So you guys brought up some really excellent points and, and including a couple of new ones that I don't think I'd heard before. So that's great too. But I just want to recognize Anne for just doing an amazing job. I mean, there's so much, and you see all the aspects of this program that she and her staff have to do. And it's pretty impressive. Unfortunately, what I have to tell you is that Anne is actually just recently resigned from her position. And will be going to take a great new opportunity in New Mexico with the Archaeological Conservancy, where she'll be helping acquire land for archaeological purposes. It's a national nonprofit that does work not only in the country, but internationally. And so she'll only be with us for a few more weeks, which we're going to dearly miss her. But of course, wish her all the best in terms of where she goes. And yeah, we're gonna.
It's been an honor to be here. Amazing organization, amazing community.
Well, once again, thanks for all that you've done.
So much, appreciate it.
The other thing I'll say is probably most of those photos Anne took. She's an amazing photographer. And yeah, so not just the one of the dogs.
Yeah.
Taking that, I don't know.
Yeah, one of us. Exactly.
Anyway, and the other thing I, I did want to mention is Anne's brought a incredibly strong environmental ethic to the, and I think really upped our game in open space as far as that goes in terms of the importance of the environment and managing our resource. So.
Oh, thank you.
Anyway, thanks for coming tonight, Anne.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That, look at that, that one right there.
Is that your picture?
Where's that?
It's Baldi.
Baldi looking for Red Mountain.
It's not the picture you did.
Yeah.
Wow. That's actually the photo that Jeffrey Bergeron got as a going away present last week. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, thanks.
All right, Mark, Town Council summary?
Well, actually we had one more item here, Mark.
Did we?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, one more item.
Yeah, so this hopefully be straightforward. We've talked with a couple of you about, you know, when we started Zoom, the Zoom world, when COVID came in being four years ago, we allowed for virtual attendance at meetings, but we limited to three meetings per year. Now that we've had some time to see how it works and, you know, Ethan's zooming in today and many of you have, we think it works pretty well. Still think it's great to bring us together in here as much as we can. But we also understand people have vacations or out of town for other reasons. And, you know, would still like to zoom in if they can and avoid absences since we've got a, a limit on the amount of absences you can have in a year. So anyway, we proposed to increase the virtual attendance from three to five per year. Wanted to hear any, your thoughts on that. Chris pulled this together before he left on vacation and there's an actual Planning Commission resolution. If you guys are so inclined, we could even take action to make a motion on that and approve that this evening if you guys wish to.
Comment, Alan?
Bob, I, I instigated this at the last meeting because I'm going to be away for the month of May. And I actually have used up my remotes, but not my absences. So I, I told Chris and Mark, I said, well, I guess I won't call in, even though I could. So I, I support it. I, I have one question though, is the absences are, we get up to four. It's a trailing 12 months, but this is written for calendar year. So are they each counted differently?
Oh, catch. Yeah, it should be the same. I think we, if you make a motion, we, you could just note that and we'll make that correction.
So this would be trailing 12 months?
Whatever, whatever is consistent with the absences.
Okay.
Yep.
So what are we going to do for amendments and motions when Steve leaves? Because he's pretty good at that.
Our game in terms of.
Pull through it.
Reading all the findings and stuff.
So you, you just volunteered.
Susan's assigned that.
So that's, I'm done.
All right, so I'll make a motion to modify this to, for the staff to make a adjustment to match the calendar language on the existing absentee, absentee policy. Second?
Second.
Second.
Sorry. Mike.
That's to adjust the language on the existing absentee policy to.
No, make, make this calendar language the same as the existing calendar language on the existing.
So this is the motion to amend and then there'll be another motion for the, yes, amended.
Yes.
Right?
Just do it all in one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there, there, so there was a motion in the packet already written out. And then you could just add to that, Mike, and to what I suggest maybe make is, page 31, the bottom paragraph.
All right. I move, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed resolution amending the Planning Commission rules of procedure, which increases the number of permitted meetings to virtually attend to five meetings within a year as designated by the existing attendance policy.
Second.
Perfect.
Can we get a move?
Yes. Mr. Lees?
No.
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Giller?
Yes.
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
I, I value the people being here, so that's the basis of my no.
If I may, I, I'd like to, to emphasize what, what Mark said. I also value people being there and will try to be there and use these virtual attendance as sparingly as possible. And I would suggest that we all try to do that. In person is always best.
Thank you, Ethan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, who, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Did you? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mark, now we're on to Town Council. So at the council, let's see. Cliff's Code Amendments Regarding Defensible Space flew through on second reading. So awesome job, Cliff, getting that through and working with red, white and blue to incorporate their suggestions that they had a few weeks ago. But now we're pretty aligned and we gave an overview on that previously. So the BGB Development Agreement sailed right through in second reading, no changes from first reading. So in the way, and so second reading, it's usually typically about 35 days after that, that it takes effect because there's an appeal period. And so, but the ordinance will take effect 35 days from that or from the, when that was adopted on April 9th. Entrada Annexation Ordinance, Entrada was also, they approved that without any changes. So Entrada is now annexed into the town. We are going to the council, excuse me, next week for the second reading on the zoning to place it in Land Use District Five, which is what it's already shown as on our Land Use Districts map. So that'll happen next week. Ellie had the first reading on demo by neglect that went through without any hiccups, right? So we're in good track there. We came up with a, the last thing we did was kind of just tweak the definition of stabilization. There were some comments about, you know, you know, just make us keep the building standing. Don't necessarily make us go in and do a full restoration. And if you read between the lines, you could interpret that either way. So we made it clear in the actual definition that the intent was really to keep a stable, you know, structure and not to be involved in restoration. That's beyond stabilization.
Was there any discussion on the grant program on that?
There was, that's, was going to be my next item. Thank you, Susan. So on the grants program, that went hand in hand, but it was a separate work, work session item at the meeting. The council agreed to a grants program. However, they did not want to provide grants if it was a short-term rental project. They just thought, you know, if they're, they're making money off short-term rental, they can certainly afford to take care of any problems they have like that. They also, we talked about different eligibility criteria. Council wasn't really excited about any of that. What they did say is we're going to put a cap of $5,000 on our grant associated with that. And.
Eligibility criteria of the applicant?
Yeah, there was talk about, you know, yeah, should there be, should there be financial? Should it be that you're working, working in town, so maybe you need the money more? Or maybe, you know, you've been there a long time, you know, owned property, whatever. And maybe, you know, you weren't rich when you got it, you know, 20 years ago, whatever. End of the day, they just said, no, none of that. But we're going to put a cap of $5,000 on the grants. And that is a limitation to a certain extent, if you've got a really major stabilization that has to occur. However, the council's concern was that we've got, we give out grants every year to nonprofits and there's, there's dozens of them in this community. And we'll give a grant of maybe like $10,000 or $15,000 to them. So to be going and giving that kind of money to individuals in the historic district who for the most part can probably afford to take care of them with maybe some exceptions, just seemed a little out of line. So, so they said, yes, we'll do it, a cap of $5,000. And Breck History is going to help us make all that happen in terms of they'll do a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of hooking them up with contractors and doing a feasibility of, you know, what, what is it going to take to, you know, keep this structure from collapsing, that kind of thing? So, and like Ellie's shown you, there's a dozen or so of those that are in fairly poor shape that we want to get to. And so the idea is we're going to try to fund it, you know, several of those a year for the next few years. So, yes, so that's, did I answer your question about the grants?
Yeah.
Yeah, great, thanks. And then we had a discussion about fractional ownership, time, time shares. Council is wanting to limit where future timeshare developments can occur. wanting to limit where future timeshare developments can occur. And, and we're talking about like multifamily development, the BGB type thing, that kind of thing. And so what the council decided is we want to limit it. We, staff came up with a map that was included a lot of the areas on the west side of town, similar to like Zone 1 in STRs in terms of where we're going to continue to allow short-term rentals to occur, but not quite that extensive, that we would allow, that we would allow future timeshare developments to occur. In reality, what that probably means is it would be some type of either a scrape or if someone converted an existing property into a timeshare. There might be some limited applications of that, like Beaver Runs in there, for example, somehow. I mean, it's individually owned, so it's kind of a stretch, but places like that.
What about somebody has a big house and decides to quarter share that with four families?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. That was going to be the next part. So that, council wants us to take a look at that. But there's a lot of issues we got to work through to deal with that. It hasn't been successfully regulated in other communities. I, Park City did it over in Utah, and then the legislature changed their rules to not allow them to be able to do that.
Is that because of legal challenges from owners?
Uh, that I don't know, but probably. And, but anyway, so they've asked us to take a look at that. And we're going to do, but that's going to be a second phase of this whole thing. Yeah. So the first phase is just going to be dealing with the areas over here where the more traditional timeshare type development thing would happen. That we're going to limit it to areas up there. And the idea is like something like, so there's a lot of density left. For example, at City Market, that could be a redevelopment. That's not somewhere I don't, that the council wanted to see timeshare development occur. And there's other properties that could fit in that category, too. So they're going to confine it considerably where it's just allowed anywhere today in theory. So, yeah, so we're going to come back in the end of May with a first reading limiting it, the traditional multifamily timeshare model. And once we get through a couple of readings on that and that's approved, which the council's like, yeah, we're going to do it. Then we'll start talking about these fractional, you know, quarter shares, eight shares, whatever it might be. You know, they start popping up. You're right, it's a good question, because people are finding new ways to make money. And, you know, new models to, you know, address these situations, you know. We don't have short-term rentals in a lot of properties anymore. You can't, if you don't already have a license.
Hearing that solution bouncing around.
Yep.
That's how we'll deal with this.
That's the evolution, exactly. I mean, th, that could happen. And it's happened a little bit, I think, but not much. But yes, so.
Short-term rental, I'm sorry. Quarter shares were a bit more popular two decades ago before short-term rentals. And I think short-term rentals kind of pushed that in the back.
Yeah. Now it's coming back a little. Yeah, you see some models out there like, what is it, Picasso? And there's a couple others that, you know, that's what they do. They, they buy up properties and then they sell off shares, you know, like an eighth share or a 12th share. You know, as long as you can, you know, have, have the thing for 30 days or longer, it's not an STR. So, yeah, so anyway, that's something we'll take a look at. But there's a lot of legal implications of that, so that's going to take a lot more time to negotiate through. So anyway, Sarah's taking the lead on this fractional ownership project, so. And that's the council update, unless anyone has any questions about that. I guess the other thing I did want to say, though, is I think we're starting to tee up for having some busier meetings coming up in the upcoming months. We're going to have 44-unit multifamily develop, multifamily project deed restricted coming in, probably at the second meeting in May, out at Highlands Riverfront. It's an active application, so please don't discuss it, you know, with anyone outside here. But that's, that's coming. And then we're likely to see master plans for amendments for Peak 7 and 8 and the Gondola lots. All that's coming here in late May and June, I think we'll be seeing those as well. So there's a few things coming down the road here. And then I just had one more thing is Steve has been an amazing leader, I will call him, of this group for the last seven years, is it, Steve?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half years. It's been, it's been a great run with you. We appreciated so much everything you've done to contribute to the organization and, and the Planning Commission and for the community. I mean, the thoughtfulness you put into your reviews and the questions you ask, everything is just, you know, it, it's exemplary. And anyway, very much appreciate everything you've done. And I know the rest of the commissioners and our staff all feel the same way. And it's bittersweet, but we're super excited to have you come in on council. So, thank you, Steve.
Well, I just want to thank everybody that I've worked with over those seven and a half years and the education that you and all the planners have given me that have really trained me in this job. I've had more fun doing this than I think anything in my life. So it's, yeah, this has been a lot of fun. And the professional people that I've worked with, you know, bar none, it's been a great experience. So thanks to you, too.
We'll miss you, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's so nice, though, to have someone with Planning Commission experience on council. You know, you got Jay on there, now you've got Steve, and it just really helps.
Yeah.
Yeah, in so many ways.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
So then, how will you fill his seat?
We have a, yes, thank you, Mike, I'm glad you asked.
We keep queuing you up.
Guys, we've got, we, we have an ad out right now. It's on the website, too. If anyone's interested, I can send it to them. It's, the vacancy recruitment is going on until May 3rd. The council will interview candidates on May 14th. So anyway, if you know any good candidates, people, please send them our way and encourage them to apply. I guess the other thing I probably should note is on May 14th, the council was having a retreat that day from noon to five, or noon to 4:30 over at the Beaver Run. And then they're coming back here at 5:00 and the interviews will be here at 5:00.
I just have one question, kind of on the way out to extend our meeting. I was a little surprised about a bill that just got passed and signed into law that I, as I look at it, it says we have no ability really to limit the number of people that occupy a dwelling, which could be a short-term rental, I'm thinking. And wondering about our, what it's, the rule, four people plus two per bedroom?
Yeah, it's a good question. I hadn't thought of it in the context of the STR rules. A lot of jurisdictions do it in their zoning. And like Summit County only allows, I think it's less than five unrelated people to live together. And they're obviously doing this just because of housing issues across the state. So we'd have to look into the applicability of that to the STR regulations, but it's a good, fair question.
It, it's a short little law, and it says a local government shall not limit the number of people who may live together in a single dwelling.
Yep.
I think the postministerialities do deal with that zoning.
Yeah, we don't, but other than in the STRs.
And the only exception that they put in there is that you can limit them if it's an affordable housing program guideline. So in our affordable housing projects, we could
Yeah.
control how many people get into the Justice Center units or that, but sure. It's avoiding discrimination lawsuits. I don't know, it's a strange law, I think. And, and if you apply it with short-term rentals, where already, I think they're trying to push the limits, at least in my neighborhood, of how many people show up when you rent a house. So I would put that on the planning radar.
Yeah. I'll follow up on that. I, I read it today.
There's a copy of the whole bill.
Polis was in a, it was in the news today. Thank you.
Is that at the State Room?
Yes.
Just one thing, I did not, I was not at the last Upper Blue, but the Country Boy Mine project, so they, they basically are zoned agricultural. And under the banner of agricultural, there's probably about 50 different activities that they could host there. And they are trying to get permission to pretty much to do a large, do more of those activities than they currently do. They also had a temporary permit to do extreme sledding and during the whole process of this process, the whole process of trying to get their permit, their, their getting approval from the Upper Blue and the county, it was discovered that that temporary permit had expired, so they had to stop extreme sledding. So I was at the last meeting and, and the county's a little slow in posting minutes. So, but it was continued again. So I, I, they keep giving them more time to, it's, it's a great resource and it's good education if you've ever taken a tour there. I'm not sharing any, my opinion, but they just, the last, the tour they gave us showed that, you know, it is an interesting historical site. Their claim is that they need these extra revenue sources to continue with upgrades and renovations and such to the site to make it safe, so people can explore further into the, into the mines and such. So anyway, if you, there's, there's more online if you'd like to read about it and what they want to do.
It's there, it's there. They had a Halloween event there one year with the escape room, and my kids just loved it, but they haven't had it since, so.
Yeah.
Wish they'd bring that back.
They're allowed to. No, they found out they weren't allowed to.
They turn off the lights in there.
Do we need to review the Class D and Class C?
That's just for your information.
Just there for our information.
Yep.
All right, so I guess we can adjourn. Chair?
Yep.
756, adjourned. 656, sorry.
Are, are we off? Are we off the air?